Welcome for February, let's see, 11th at 7:30 and we're on time and we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. So, item two is public comment. Is there anyone here from the public this evening that wishes to comment at this time? We'll close public comment. Move on to approval of prior minutes.
I move we accept the joint meeting of town council board of education and board of plans, January 13, 2015.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? I oppose? Abstain?
I move we accept the special town council meeting minutes of January 13, 2015.
Discussion? All in favor? I oppose? Abstain?
Okay, I'm glad you guys can do the rest.
Item four.
I'll move to, you want me to reappoint?
Reappoint. Yeah, you wouldn't mind.
You rescind and then reappoint?
Yes.
Okay. I move to rescind the town council action from December 8, 2014 meeting, which extended the turf field subcommittee to February 14, 2015.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? I oppose? Abstain? And Joe, would you make a new motion?
Yeah, and I move to extend the appointment of the current, well, I move to reappoint members of the turf field subcommittee carried through March 14, 2015. Those subcommittee members being Peter Bass, Joseph Fallow, Frank Worgel, Andrew Chastain, Wendy Fullback, Lou Pop, Alhage.
Alhage.
I have problems with that man. Douglas Skelly and Robert McCarty.
Second.
Why? We're doing that because we're waiting for a final report from the consultant.
Right. So, do you want to meet again?
And so, the committee chair, subcommittee chair requested an extension, so when the report comes in, the members can meet, talk about the report, and then bring all the answers to all the questions that came forward at the last meeting and the report.
Yes.
All in favor? I oppose? Abstain? I don't really have any comments, other than I'm glad we got a great audit, and I know that the finance department has been working extra hard and in cooperation with the Board of Ed and see the WPCA coming right along too, so I hope that we get the opportunity to have everybody see the good work that those employees are doing.
Well, they did use the face several times. No material weaknesses, you gotta be happy about that.
So, very nice. Item six, I had asked, I'm asking the tax assessor to give an update to the council this evening with regard to the grant list, because a lot of people keep talking about no grant list growth. Well, there has been grant list growth, but we have deferrals and abatements and things like that that impact us. So, I thought an overview of how those have increased and how they impact our grant list might be good to have prior to us going into the budget season. So, I don't know if you wanna stand Cathy or pull a chair up and make, if I have to walk there or?
I just, I have a review for each one of you. And basically, what this review is, it's just a report of the grant list and the exemptions and the abatements that we apply against the gross grant list. And as you can see on here, the gross grant list from 10/113 to 10/114 actually increased by 20,595,130, which really is barely 1%, but it is an increase. Although the personal property grant list increased, most of this ends up as manufacturing equipment exemption.
Didn't we get something, we used to get 60-something percent back from the state on that?
We don't get anything back.
Yes, we did Frank. We used to get it back, but we no longer, they, they used to give you back 100%.
Yeah.
Then they knocked it down. Then they put it into a pot and said it depended on how many communities applied for that money, and then they would apply a different formula to how much was in there until the money ran out, and then they just said, forget it, you're not getting anything. But they still waive those taxes.
Yeah, we're still, it's still mandatory that we give the exemption, but the state doesn't have anything to do with it anymore.
So, could we waive some of the taxes we owe them? We're just curious, they can waive ours, why can't we waive yours?
Frank, please, why don't you call your representative and see if you can make that happen?
And then I just have a brief summary about the number of certificate occupancies that I've done, the new construction, the reason why the grant list, you know, doesn't grow more because we have more commercial property in Milford now is because most of the projects have been done over a period of years, like the shopping center, you know, Litchfield Crossing and, and, you know, several of those projects. So, each year, they have been adding to it. So, it's not like we get one big increase per year.
How close is the new Dunkin' Donuts?
It's, it's almost ready.
Coffee's almost on?
Well, it'd be so good to have a Dunkin' Donuts at that.
Just what we need, another Dunkin' Donuts. Okay, fine.
Well, it isn't a good spot.
Well, yes. Going down this way, coming back up this way, you got them, yeah.
We did some mapping research that, based on the update upgrade for GIS, that increased some acreage and increased some acreage, so that was kind of, really didn't work out that well. There were also decreases in value. There were seven demo permits issued for buildings, reductions due to fire, handled condo, and then there were others also. And there were some reductions due to change of use of property that associated changes. Much of the construction has been commercial projects that over the years, which I just had mentioned. To get to the exemptions, we have a total of $6,465 in assessment that is reimbursed. That's additional veterans, social security, disability, and state elderly benefits. Am I seeing these numbers?
Six million.
Six million, I'm sorry, 6,465. The non-reimbursed, reimbursed portion is 108,103,520. These are mostly, these are all mandatory by state statute, we have to give these exemptions. Then we have the, the abatements, which the town elderly freeze program is, well, it's estimated at 19 million for this year. Last year it was like 18 million. I do have a spreadsheet that, that shows the different increases from 2010, and I can email that to you if, well, I just, tonight you probably didn't have time to, to really look at that, it's pretty expensive. Volunteer firefighters and ambulance is 4 million, 400,000. And then the property leased to tax exempt entities, which means that anyone, any company that leases property to Milford Hospital or to any of the churches, doesn't pay the personal property tax, which I find that a little, yeah. No, they don't. No, no, they don't. Their, their schedules that they send us for personal property are the same as everybody else.
And it's a voluntary program? This is an ordinance.
This is an ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah. The three listed at the bottom are by town ordinance. The local, the local freeze program, you're all aware of, is, is, it grows every year. What isn't given by the state, because it's a freeze program, what isn't given by the state has to be made up with the town benefit, because it's a freeze program. The taxes are frozen, so in order to keep the taxes frozen, we have to, it started out at 960 dollars, the town benefit was only supposed to go to 960 dollars, which would be fine if you didn't have a freeze. But because you have a freeze, every year, that 960 gets tacked on a little more because of the increase in the no rate and because of, the state is the state.
It's a different program. This is a lot more rich than the state's program.
Okay, so this doesn't mirror exactly?
At all, no.
No, no.
What's the differences?
Well, the state is not a freeze program.
Okay.
We go by the same income for the town benefit, except for the fact that the town benefit, we accept half of social security if they don't qualify for the state. So, you know, that qualifies more people for the town benefit, obviously. We, we, we do have to follow the rules for the state to some extent, for the, for the income and residency and that type of thing. But with the freeze, it just puts, it's just a whole new, different thing, because the tax is frozen. In fact, we've had trouble with our reports to the state, because the state, in the beginning, the state was accepting our reports as, as they were. Now, the state is making us calculate, recalculate based on the actual tax, the report. So, now we have to get the state report based on the regular tax, and we have to do the town report based on the frozen tax from 2010, it was adjusted with a rebuild, but every time that there's an increase in the no rate, there's, if someone gets less from the state, the town has to pick up the slack, you know, so.
Now, is that in line with what other towns do as well?
There's very few towns that have freezes.
Nobody usually has a freeze.
So, you know, something that I would like to have looked at, we've had committees before.
The committees have looked at it, because as the staff tells me, we have a millionaire in there that qualifies. And it was intended to help people that really needed the help, not necessarily benefit the people that really didn't need the help, so trying to.
Yeah, there's, there are a lot of, I'm sorry.
So, so based on, because it's a freeze program, you, you don't check their income after they qualify?
Oh, yes, they still have to apply, they still have to, they apply every two years, just like the state. They have to abide by the income limitations, except for the half social security.
And we don't get to see assets?
No, we don't get to see assets. The, the state does not require, the state requires adjusted gross income and social security. So, we, we ask for a copy of their income tax return and their statement of social security. And then they have to put any other income that they may have, but it's, it's not, we, it's almost impossible to, to get that income.
So, we have to redefine the qualifications for the program?
Mm-hmm.
To include assets? Now, is there a penalty if you hide assets?
Well, there is, but, yeah.
You only gotta find one and prosecute.
You know, there's a penalty for the state, and when you're signing a form saying that this is a true, you know, and you could be penalized if, if anything came up. The state doesn't audit anymore, the state years ago used to audit their accounts, but they don't do that anymore, so. How long ago was it that somebody looked at the setup? Because it's quite a few years. I think it's been, I think it's been two, two years since we.
Well, we hang committees, but their findings weren't brought forward. Because they never could finish a finding. They get to a certain point, working with the town attorney and the assessor, and then kinda stall.
Yeah. So, you know, I, I think it would be great if another committee could.
You think it would should be?
Oh, definitely.
Do you think the committee should focus on that as well as this personal property lease exception?
That too, that, because the leasing company is the one getting the benefit, it's not the, I, I don't understand.
Basically guaranteed that any savings would go to the not-for-profit that they're renting from.
Right, absolutely, yeah. But that's not the case.
Or two.
In fact, a lot of the, a lot of leasing companies don't even realize that that exception exists, and they'll call and they'll, they'll look for their bill, the personal property tax bill, and they tax it then. So, but yes, I think because of the, if, when I said the spreadsheet showing the amount of the tax revenue that is lost due to, over the years, due to some of these programs, you'll see that, I think it's pretty important that we, we do something.
Other questions for Cathy?
Thanks Cathy, appreciate it. Next is the assistant town engineer, Dan Stanton, to give you guys an update on, in the spring, you'll see the project that we received the grant from for the bridge street sidewalk and street skate project. And if you could bring that map up.
Yeah.
Because it's not for the bank.
That's right.
Cathy, can I have another one of these for the secretary?
Good evening, I'm Dan Stanton, I'm here representing Public Works for a Steve Grant, which is a state small-town economic assistance program grant. We've done this a few times around town on various other roads, so in particular, the mayor's office worked to get this grant on Bridge Street. This will be primarily focused on the north side of Bridge Street from Youngsfield Road up to Main Street at the Tidalee Restaurant, and I'll show the rest of that. So, what we're looking to do here is improve both drivers, pedestrians, and business users in that area. So, what we're looking to do right now is, we're finishing up our design, we had a public hearing a week ago, we were supposed to meet with you two weeks ago, and we got snow, so we got snow again, and now we're here. So, we've been making a little bit of progress, but basically, what we look to do is make ADA compliant ramps at each end of the project and in the middle where that's necessary, enhance some of the grass areas that are there to add some greenery and to reduce impervious area, also to add concrete curb and concrete sidewalks throughout the program as we go. So, set this down at the bottom. So, primarily, you know, we're looking to add, you know, grass strips maybe where they don't exist currently, enhance the entrance to Railroad Street as one of the prime economic corridors of town, and improve the pedestrian safety by adding some streetlights as the project permits. So, specifically, we'd be adding a light in addition to the two that are already by parking wreck in front of their building, kind of straddling the gap between the two light poles that are in the street already, adding one at the intersection where the repair shop is, and adding one to Ray Ramsey Park, and another light on the far side of Patriots' Way, just to create an entrance there also. So, like I said, we had a public hearing, Sue Taz put some pictures in the paper that we had sketched together, this is also available on our website, if you have a QR app on your phone, or just go to the Public Works website, and you'll see this information up there if you have further questions regarding that, I could go from there.
Beth, how are you gonna handle where the railroad crosses over?
We do not need to do a significant amount of work there. The state a few years ago, when the bump in the track got bad, had taken care of that, it's still in good condition. When we had performed the work at the Railroad Street project, we had stopped just to the east side of that, we'll be doing the same treatment on the west side, as far as that goes, so.
Okay. And then, do you have any concern, I see where your grassy bank is, and given the torturous snow conditions that we've had, do you have any concerns about that getting graded away because of the plowing?
This will be at grade, I mean, so it'll be a little bit more similar if you've had a chance to walk on Little City Avenue or where we did work on East Street in conjunction with that project. It's a best practice for both water quality and for a snowshelt, which unfortunately, we do have to take into account. So, you know, it's not just the pedestrian project, we gotta recognize that this needs to be usable, you know, year-round, but we recognize that some greenery is an enhancement to the immunity versus blacktop and other concrete, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Katie, Dan, on the ADA ramps?
Yes.
Okay, I get the end and the beginning, but where is the one in the middle?
There are two on the side of Railroad Street. When we did the project approximately, what, 10 years ago, now we have to retrofit those ramps like we did on Main Street here.
So, that makes a total of four for this stretch?
It'll be four.
And that, obviously, is great.
Yeah.
It's nice. Thank you, Walter.
You know who was great, and it was a beautiful entranceway coming across the bridge, but across from the tennis court, when we had all those flowering trees.
Flowered areas, yes.
They were magnificent. What can we do about that?
We can probably get some, we'll have to see how much money's left in the budget for me.
Because that, what, what a gateway.
We do have that in the estimate, and you wanna be able to put the trees in the correct locations, I mean, Parking Rec does a good job of taking care of, you know, the stretch down adjacent to the tennis courts, and again, the focus of the projects on the north side of the road, which the other obstruction that we run into is, is the utility lines, so you can't plant trees unfortunately underneath them, and the state will.
Can you check the setback on the other side, just to see what is privately owned and what is state or municipal, and we might get a couple of smaller trees? Because there was a problem with the businesses who were concerned about the ability for potential customers to see their businesses.
See the buildings.
So, maybe something shorter along the line of those, like a flower, like a crab apple, those don't get real big, and generally speaking.
bonsai trees are small.
No, pretty flowers.
But they take a lot of maintenance.
That's how about, about how good the trees at my house do.
Are we allowed to use any leftover ground money from this to plant trees?
Well, we have some, it's view shed, so that's aesthetics and stuff, if he has it, but I'm, we're shooting for the sidewalk and the ramps first and.
Yeah, so I mean, there's been a nice job done over the years, like I say, I mean, there's some mature trees in Ray Ramsey Park, there's mature trees in Patriots' Way, and those are basically the two primary areas we would have to add trees. I know when we rebuilt or we have the parking wreck building, you know, they added, I'm not sure, a couple of trees.
Couple of trees, yeah.
They added a couple of trees along the parking lot there to enhance that building, so there's a lot already out there, this is just the next step.
Just keep in mind that we have trees.
Frank, flower.
Yeah, I, the rendition of the lights on the top, I get that. There's no lights on the bottom?
Because of the estimated cost, we would be including that as an alternate bid, I mean, typically, you run into the range of, you know, four to 4,500 dollars per light plus the conduit, so it's, it's on a different depiction of this, and it will be placed out the bid, so if we can afford those items, especially along that corridor by the.
I think, I think lights would be very, very attractive coming in over the bridge, because it's our town. Having said that, if you don't have the money, I understand that, but if you're digging that up to put cement sidewalks in, you're never gonna get a cheaper.
Excuse me Frank, Mike, could you please go upstairs to the board of finances, waiting for you to talk about snow.
Oh, okay.
Take the elevators.
I'll fill you in on it.
She just texted me. I'm sorry.
We'd have the meeting upstairs and have him come downstairs, but, you know, that'd be quicker. All right. So, yeah, the lights through that area.
What I'm, what I'm suggesting, as long as you have to tear that up to put in a cement sidewalk, lay conduit down, even if you can't put the lights up in the future, when you might have some money to put lights up, you only have to pay for the lights, because conduit's in the ground and that's, that's the hard part.
Yeah.
When are we planning to start this, and what do you anticipate the traffic disruption that there is?
Well, that's, that's item number one, is obviously to minimize traffic disruption. So, we want to utilize the variable message boards kind of on each end of town, just like we do in an emergency to, you know, I wanna say push as much traffic to the Grove Street, East Street corridor to avoid the work. We're also trying to work with the contractor to minimize the length of time. We had a very similar experience, and I think all of us were in town when we did East Street, and I don't believe that was extremely disruptive. What I expect is, you know, you're gonna have a tri-axle truck basically sitting on what's the existing sidewalk or the demoed sidewalk and a, you know, small or moderate-sized excavator out there. So, really, the lanes will need to remain open for traffic, so that's the priority.
Yeah.
And like I said, I believe I may have mentioned in there that generally, the state requires us to work between the hours of nine and three, so that you're not impacting the morning commute or the evening, you know, commute. We all are gonna be performing this work basically during most schools and sessions.
That's what I was worried about too, the bus schedules.
And it's a state rule.
Right.
Katie? Dan, the schedule that you have here, obviously, we've already had a couple of reschedules, and I see that you have the bid awards and then construction, so that by Memorial Day, it would be passable, I won't say it's done necessarily, but.
Right, it'll be, it should be substantially completed by Memorial Day is what we're looking at, and based on previous projects.
Yeah, okay, good.
And they will be required to maintain it safely and in a manner that's passable by pedestrians. There may be small detours for the public that's walking during periods of time, but they also have to, you know, direct people the way they need to be. You know, I wanna say it's disruptive on a day like today when people haven't buttoned their sidewalks or shoveled their sidewalks off also, but people obviously do use the corridor to, to reach the bus or go shopping or whatever the case is, so.
So, as of now, you're, you're feeling comfortable with this schedule?
Right.
So, that's good. Thanks. Thank you. Any other question? Thanks Dan, I appreciate it.
Thank you Dan.
Next is immunities update. We have Greg and Kendrick here, they're more than diligently, their regular stuff and immunities.
Good evening. We're making steady progress towards our goal of a 7-1-Go live date, and some of our accomplishments that we have is we establish weekly progress meetings that are attended by the mayor, who injects her own unique perspective and energy to those meetings.
Thank you Greg.
We also, now, we, I, I find her presence quite helpful. We also established quarterly onsite meetings whereby Tyler will come here and we'll discuss progress, we'll discuss problems. Councilwoman Falder attended, I, I hope she got some enlightenment from, from that meeting. We also changed the format of our training sessions to dedicate time to the Board of Ed and the town separately, so we can each address our own unique situations or problems regarding the system. We also tied out fiscal year 2013 and closed out fiscal year 14, which we are in the process of loading for his history within immunities. So, that's, that's not going as quickly as I like, but we are making good. but we are making good progress, good steady progress towards that. TCM, which is the electronic filing system for Immunis, is up and running since, since we met last, we were able to accomplish that. We also reviewed and modified our accounts payable process. We are now, we have agreed with the Board of Ed to institute what is called a three-way match. That requires that, number one, you have a purchase order. Number two, the Department of Requisitioner gets online and electronically acknowledges receipt of the goods. And three, that you have an invoice, thereby completing a three-way match in order for an invoice to be paid. We also purchased barcodes for our accounts payable invoices, which is part of the process, which in turn allows us to electronically attach invoices to a purchase order.
Allows the invoices to get scanned in in a, in a large batch. They can all just go in, the system reads a barcode and organizes things properly.
We also created end-user matrix for departmental reviews. What that is, is a listing of users and the functions that they'll be performing within Immunis. And that's being used to schedule training sessions and also to assign responsibility within departments for, you know, what individuals will actually be doing on the system. We, this is a key point, is we secured a dedicated trainer who will guide us through the financial project through completion. He's relatively new. He worked in, in the training aspect of it. However, he has come from internally within Tyler, and he was on their help desk. So, he's been very helpful with us with our conversion problems and getting our processes under control.
This is Justin.
Pardon me?
Justin.
Jason.
Jason.
Jason. Jay Federman.
Starts with a J. Katie?
Jay Federman.
Katie had a question.
Oh, I just, how, how many, what percentage did you say of users are trained now?
None.
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 Okay, so July first is your go-live, meaning everyone will be able to use the system?
Yes.
So between now, February, whatever day it is, till then, you're going to train everybody?
Yes.
Both town and Bailey?
Yes.
With one trainer?
Yes. We will have several classes. We'll have classes. Our biggest class is going to be requisition entry. Right now, we have approximately forty individuals throughout the town, on the town side alone, that will be entering requisition. So, they usually have classes of perhaps twenty. So that would require two classes of twenty.
Well, and I think you might remember, I asked this question a while back. So, who's going to do the work of these twenty or forty or whatever? Are they going to take these classes on the weekend or after work?
They're going to take them during work.
So, okay, again, I, I'm still curious to know how, with the small number of people we have now doing things, how that's all going to play out? Because if there's no one there, Kathy or somebody being trained, who's going to do that job?
Well, it depends on how quick somebody gets it.
Yeah.
The training sessions typically, from what I understand, last about two hours. And, yes.
For each segment? I, I, no, that doesn't surprise me. But, so we'll start with the requisitions, and then they'll move into the next group and invoicing, et cetera, so.
We've developed what, how much time and what we need. We may alter, somebody might have to be for a little overtime, or somebody might have to come in at a different time like that.
Right, yes, we do.
We don't have that nailed down at all. And in some departments, there's only one person anyway.
No, that's what I was getting, I just, it's more a matter, not that it won't get done, but I'm just thinking of how it impacts the public, the outside world, because a lot of these people do interact and have to perform things that are going to, you know, we can't really put a close sign on, which, well, we could, like a business might, but.
This is really a one-shot deal, though. I mean, we're talking about the future of where the town's going. I mean, this is a necessary, even if you will, Katie. I don't know any other way to, to accomplish that.
We'll put you at the door and tell people. No, I'm just curious. No, we've talked about it before, and I realize it has to be done. Training, of course, is the key to it ever working the way it's supposed to work. And you don't want them to, to not grasp it. So, as long as that's still being considered and, or over time or whatever it takes.
And if we did have to do something on a day, there are times that we have a department that only has one person, and they might be out sick or on vacation, and there is a sign on the door, you put something on the website, or notice that gee, on this day, for training purposes, there may not be someone in.
Yeah, no, it's just the closer, I mean, that happens in business as well. It's just the closer we get to the live date, I think about how much time we don't have.
What we don't want to do is train too early, too, and then by any time we are out, we forgot.
We're also trying to have a few days in a row of the training and stagger, you know, the same class wouldn't necessarily be all one thing, stagger it, so that, you know, a couple of different people from the same department can do a different day here and there to be able to cover.
But it is just the one Jason, or Justin, whatever his name is.
Yes.
Use your trainer.
Yes, no, he's very good.
Good.
Yes? Just back to the training. Is there an opportunity for them to use something like a go-to meeting or a virtual meeting, so that if departments really can't leave their desk, they could participate virtually as well as record that session? And then it would be available whenever?
Well, I believe they said something about you could train even, you know, remotely, same type of thing, like a go-to meeting, but, yeah, at a whole different time than the actual training that's going on here.
But I would also push for a recorded session, so they could just go back to it on their own time and then re-watch it, because they're going to hear it and they're not going to remember it. And it's nice to have that webinar or that online facilities.
Right, usually those modules are, they're set up to be watched at different times, so that's how they.
Right. So that, that would be my suggestion, is if you could do something like that.
Not only that.
I'm sure they have the capabilities and the technology.
Well, we're doing all training here in our.
But if it's a go-to, they would have a license to use those softwares.
Okay, yeah, all right, I see what you're saying.
Go-to or a join-me or something.
Yeah, we'll, we'll see if they have any of the webinar stuff.
Join-me's free, you could use it.
Right.
Not only that.
I mean, that's standard, so I'm sure they will.
After, after we go live, from what I understand, we're going to be setting up a war room, if you will, to field any questions, offer help to anybody within that first one or two weeks after we go live, to assist anyone with any problems that they, they do have.
Will the users have a contact number? I mean, because, you know, you can't, you guys can't be there at all times. But usually, with a system implementation, there's a eight-hundred number or an instant message contact to somebody. So, if you're in the middle of setting something up and you're stuck, you know, rather than running around, you know, usually have help.
Not only that, I mean, for like requisition entry, don't forget, there's like forty people that are going to go to that training. I mean, they can always pick up the phone and, and contact another individual who's been through. Do you remember how to do that? Yeah, this is how you do that.
Well, and my suggestion, too, is identify those that are the quick learners and that picked up quickly to call them your super user. But they would be the goal of a person to ask for any particular requisition question.
Because you don't want to perpetuate bad info, you know, so people think they got it.
Right.
And they don't. And they tell everybody what they think is the right way to do it, and then you have twenty people running around.
Right.
But there's also the core group of us that, that know where to help and know where to go.
You and Kendrick and Kendrick and Kathy.
Kathy.
Good.
Yeah, Hubble Bank.
And then my other question is, does the software have online help capabilities so that they could watch recorded sessions once they're in the software itself? If they forget how to do something?
I'm not sure, there is online help, I'm not sure about a recorded session. If they have any of those pre-existing at this point in time.
But like an F-one help key?
Yeah, they do have.
Yeah, okay, so it takes a while, but it's there.
And it'll have a dropdown with an explanation.
And you've vetted that internal help to make sure it's sufficient to what your needs are?
We haven't gotten that deep into it yet.
That would be my suggestion, is to do a thorough analysis of that.
Yeah, we're still doing the setup process and the whole thing.
We know it exists.
And they don't get into the specifics for each user.
Correct, because I know they're not providing you manuals, and they're saying they have the online help available. Just vet it and make sure that they have enough.
Absolutely.
So write that down as a note, would you? Since you're saying yes as they're talking, but you're not writing.
All right. Continuing?
Yes, continuing.
We have also modified end-user screens for invoice quick entry application. They're out-of-the-box canned invoice entry screen was very robust, if you will. And there were a lot of, there were a lot of areas that were really redundant or unnecessary. So we designed a truncated version for a quick entry screen, which is much more user-friendly. Also, Tyler is, moving on to, that's for the finance portion of it. For HR and payroll, Tyler has agreed to build all the tables. Whereas, we internally built the tables for the financial modules. They're going to be building those.
Is that a cost under the current contract, or are we being charged more?
There's going to be a cost involved. I mean, we had not incurred any other cost to this point. I mean, we did not bring in a consultant, whereas Wyndham brought in Bloom Shaprell. They spent a hundred forty thousand dollars for what we did internally here. And I remember.
So we're still working on that?
Yeah, that, that.
If a different cost comes up, we'll bring it, like, please, will you? Thank you.
We also received a, a sign-off on our accounts payable checks from Webster. We, they're fine, and they can go through the system. They checked it as far as the micro-encoding and spacing and all that. So they're, they're fine for end of production ready. What, what we've yet to accomplish is we're going to continue reviewing and troubleshooting various financial processes such as accounts receivable, budgeting, general ledger, and grant accounting. We will begin review and data upload of the HO, HR and payroll information. Kendrick, you want to talk about that a little bit?
I have a link to the four hundred right now, our existing system, to try to figure out exactly what data is in there and what can we pull out easily. I received from Immunis the entire sheet of all the information that they're looking for in three files to upload for all the, like, employee master file, other employee information that HR would have, or payroll would have. And I'm working on the process right now of figuring out where are all the different pieces, because only some of it's in the four hundred, some of it HR will have. And I have to find out where everything is, and then start to consolidate it all. But I already have the master, for the employee master file, I have the main Excel spreadsheet done out. I just have to now find where is all the information to populate it, so.
We, we will also be commencing HR and payroll analysis and code building. That's, that's coming up in the future. We have to train all end-users, as we've already covered. We need to load the 2015 budget and once adopted the 2016 budget. And that's where we are right now.
So I guess we'll be busy for a while.
We'll be busy for quite some time.
Any other questions on Immunis? Well, thanks a lot, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks. The next item is with Social Services. And we've included an executive session, because we want to discuss particulars that lend themselves to being individuals, because it's easy to figure out who everybody is. And I'd like to invite in Peg Malina, the Director of Social Services, and Al Chikin, the Personnel Director. And I'd like some questions?
Sure, move.
Second.
All in favor of going into executive session, inviting in those two? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Session? No motions were made or votes carried. And we are to the open session with regard to possible action on proposed changes to job descriptions and classifications for the Social Services Department Secretary Office Coordinator.
I'd like to move that we make the change to the job description for the Department of Social Services Office Coordinator to reflect changes per that presented by the Social Services Director.
And that's on the seven.
Great, seven, eight.
That's the one for seven, eight.
Correct.
Moving, moving, great, seven, eight.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm reading wrong.
Was there a second?
Second.
Second, yeah. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye, opposed.
Abstain? And the second part of the open session is possible action on proposed wage adjustment to the social worker counselor/advocate position. Who has the language for that?
Are we changing the job description, too?
Yes. You're approving the job description that was submitted with the suggestions?
I would, I would move that we approve the job description as proposed to change, and we increase the wages fifty-three thousand for it.
So you want to increase the wages as discussed?
Yes.
Thank you.
Second.
Any other discussion? So this would be the job description with the changes of other duties as required. And moving the bachelor's degree to the beginning of the sentence, two years' experience, and ending in master's in social work toward.
To third.
And removing the specificity.
And removing the hours, because generally speaking, most of our non-union do more than the hours that we grant, so we don't want to limit them.
And we also want to add in the competency.
You getting all this?
All the competency for the office suite and the database management. That's important. Coordination, yes.
So all the highlighted changes will be reflected. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Item eight is Public Works. And this is, I'm not going to spend a lot of time supporting this, Mike. It's probably a little obvious.
Might be another one coming up soon. You have to deploy even more. I'm sorry.
Thanks.
I shouldn't miss it. Let me hand out the quick synopsis of this year's winter. And I'm going to hand out another one, that's a synopsis of last year's winter, for comparison purposes, really.
It's looking so good in December.
I know. Unfortunately.
I know where a lot of this went. I know exactly where a lot of this salt went. You, Walter?
Yes, I do. Kind of Wood Mountain Road.
So that is, you know, basically, three, Monday or Tuesday, I guess, when the storm actually ended. We've had eighteen storm events for the year. And that's about average for us, frankly. But obviously, we're only partway through February right now, so we certainly can expect some more. And then, as we started doing analysis, of course, from, you know, what we can expect the rest of the year, it was eerily similar to last year, although we had some more storms last year in December, believe it or not. So we, we had two extra storms at the same time last year. We're on storm number twenty, as of this date, but. But if you start comparing dates of where the storms occurred, the patterns quite similar this year to those last year, which is, but kind of concerns me a little bit, which tells, you know, tells me we could be looking at as many as maybe eight storms. Actually, now we have, oh, sorry.
Where's that groundhog we're going to throw him for?
No, I put my ceiling groundhog.
That's why.
She'll discuss what this is twenty-fourth.
I don't know what I'm eating, I have. Quality, it's going to be six more weeks.
It's in color, Frank.
Pardon?
It's in color.
Yes, I noticed. Only one.
So really, this is, it's kind of a snapshot of where we are with material usage, storm events. I can give you all the details of the typical storms with, with this printout, but the details are there. What I did do for this year is just highlight some of the major storm events that we've had in orange color, and some of the icing storms. And that's really what has caused us a lot of problems this year, was, was a lot of the storms came with rain after snow or rain before snow. And icing conditions tend to use quite a bit more material, unfortunately, than, than other types. But, um, you know, the bigger storms, more in the overtime, just because of length of the storms, and the, uh, the bluish ones here probably eating up a little bit more material, uh, overall. With the exception there, you see that blizzard, I guess, would be the, um, whichever it was named, but the, the January twenty-sixth one was, that major blizzard that we had, it was fairly lengthy for us. Wasn't a, a big snowfall amount, thankfully, uh, that we ended up with, but it was, um, it was a, a long storm, by duration, so.
So, uh, I'd like to entertain a motion with regard to the emergency appropriation. Someone would like to take that?
Sure.
Uh, Katie?
I'd like to move that, uh, take action on a request for emergency appropriation of two hundred thousand dollars in order to manage anticipated material needed and staffing demands due to severe winter weather conditions coming from surplus or any account determined by the Director or the Board of Finance.
Director OR.
Oh, OR, yes, OR, Board of Finance, with a hundred seventy-five thousand to the Winter Materials and Supply Account, number six oh eight nine, three one zero, zero 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 three, and twenty-five thousand to the Labor Overtime Account, number six zero eight nine, one two zero, zero 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 one.
Second.
Any other discussion? I did wanna throw in that the Parks and Rec employees have been working for the significant storms with, uh, the DPW, taking care of the downtown, and it's worked out really well. We've received very, uh, quite a few compliments, which have been passed on to the Teamsters here at DPW and the ones at Parks and Rec.
I, and just, I'd, I'd love to add on top of that, um, what it's really helped us with this year, unlike last year, um, is, you know, is if our guys aren't kind of shot enough with the storm events, the way they've been coming, um, rotating then afterwards and starting to do downtown cleanup, as the one night, like, we would be probably doing it tonight, and we probably would've been doing it last night. Well, these are the only two nights the guys have had off in about a week and a half. So, that's problematic, what we've been able to do, and, and really with Parks and Rec help and, and cooperation, and it's a huge help to us, um, it saves us our resources, and that's our biggest resource right now. I mean, materials is obviously a huge resource to us, human resources is, is a, a major component of that, and keeping them somewhat fresh. They're not, but, um, somewhat as best they can be. You know, it's helped out their morale, and it's certainly helped out their, you know, ability to manage their, their rest and, you know, keep fresh for the times that they need. So, it's, it's a tremendous help. We're ecstatic that we've changed it, we're ecstatic that Parks and Rec has been, you know, cooperative and helpful. Uh, all the men have been, you know, a tremendous help to us, so I, I can echo that sentiment, just usually how much... And I think, in all reality, what it's done is it saved everybody a lot of overtime. In terms of cost of dollars, we're able to clean the storm up quicker than we've been able to. A whole lot less overtime than we've been able to, 'cause bringing my guys back for two nights costs a substantial amount of money in overtime, so, you know, with them working during the storm with us, of course, they're making overtime, but it's less in terms of the, the impact to the town, so, you know, we've done a better job with less resources, and it's saved our resources for the times that we're gonna need, so, all around, good, uh, good news for all of us.
Nice, thank you. On favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
And the other guys from us, they're doing a great job.
Absolutely.
We will, we will pass along, we appreciate it, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Boy, they're trying to get in at four.
You got the covert, yeah, you got the covert, right?
Okay, um, item nine, are some, uh, a couple of things that the town attorney has drafted with regard to requests from, uh, the public, members of the council, myself. I also have the, uh, curve feasibility study on here, item C. I have nothing in there for you to do, no action, and no decision, no discussion, because it was tabled. I'm required to technically put it on the next agenda, which, of course, we missed the last two meetings, and so I wanted to be here so that it was technically on here, but it's not on here to talk about anything, because there's no study that's been received. So, Randy, if you would wanna...
Certainly.
...talk about A.
I'll take these in, in, in order. Section A, uh, item A is a summary, uh, uh, of, of, an ordinance that authorizes a summary publication. What that is, is instead of having your proposed ordinance published in full in the newspaper, because of the expense, the mayor's concerned about that expense, and it is an expense, the, uh, the statute authorizes the publication of a summary of the proposed ordinance. Um, once the, and again, that summary has to contain certain language, and that language I've scrubbed into the, into the ordinance. The language that is in quotes is statutory language, it has to appear, and it's in bold, and on your copies. The, the rest of it is the mayor's, uh, uh, the mayor's idea, because it will, and, but it dovetails with the authorization of the, of the ordinance, so that the ordinance would be, proposed ordinance would be published in summary form, explaining the purposes of the ordinance and brief, and briefly identifying what it's about. It has to be concurrently filed in the town clerk's office, 'cause it has to be available. The statute requires that if the, if a person requests a copy of it to be mailed, then the town clerk has to mail it and no charge to the person, and that's a statutory requirement as well. That's something that, that, that is really, I don't think's gonna happen too often. But in any event, the difference between publishing a summary before and publishing after it's enacted is because of our charter. Our charter states that, there's an ambiguity in it, but the charter states, section four oh six, is that once an ordinance is enacted, it should be lodged in the town clerk's office and published in full. After it's enacted. Doesn't have to be published in full before, before, uh, uh, when it, when it's proposed, but after it's enacted. So, you need, you need to revise the charter at the time, charter revision, in order to get by that. But in any event, this, this, this matches the, the statutory authority, it has some custom language, but the language that is, that is required is in quotes.
And I got the idea, actually, from, uh, Roxbury, and they've been doing it for five years without any problems with regard to being able to summarize, uh, some of the different legal notices. And people can go to the website, or go to the clerk's office, or somewhere, and pick up a hard copy, or request a mailed copy, and it's just a few more dollars, you could say.
Absolutely, yeah.
It's a lot more dollars, actually.
Yeah, it is, yeah, it's a lot.
Because you don't have to publish the thing twice.
Did you want that motion before Randy talks about the second one?
Yes.
I move that the mayor, uh, be authorized to convene a public hearing for the creation of an ordinance entitled Publication of Proposed Ordinance Summary, to be scheduled on the twenty-third of February at seven o'clock, and then, we'll run, I mean, in the...
I think that's too close, what, what date?
Well, that's the next meeting.
Yeah, but today's the...
Fourteen days.
Yeah.
This is a Wednesday, yeah.
Talk to Wednesday.
March nine.
Right.
March nine.
At seven o'clock, and the next one would be seven fifteen?
Yes.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Yeah, I keep thinking it's Monday, thank God, it's Wednesday. Item two, uh, B, uh, nine B.
The next is, is a, is an ordinance that the mayor, um, asked to be described regarding the hundred percent, uh, the, the, I'm sorry, the exemption, the tax exemption for a hundred percent disabled veteran. This dovetails with the amendment to, to the statutes, which is section twelve dash eighty-one E?
Yes.
Twelve dash eighty-one E, and what that statute, uh, authorizes, and actually, it could be construed as required, because under, under certain language it's required, is to give a one-hundred percent disabled veteran a statutory exemption up to a statutory amount. That, that, that disability has to be determined by the Veterans Administration, and they have to meet certain, uh, income guidelines, uh, for that additional, this additional exemption. Kathy can speak to that should be wanted or two, but the, the statute, this, this ordinance essentially follows the statute, except the mayor has, has placed a kicker in it, because there is a provision in the statute that says that this is available, and there also is available a makeup payment by the state of Connecticut. What we've drafted into this one is that this ordinance is effective and, and available, provided that that makeup provision stays intact from the state. There's nothing in the statute.
Yeah, Frank?
Yeah, um, I assume this hundred percent disability is wa, while in active service?
Yeah, as a result...
I'm a veteran, if I get disabled, I'm not qualified.
Yeah, it has to be as a result of service. It doesn't have to be combat, but it has to be as a result of military service.
Kathy's prepared to give you the numbers as they exist now, and how many people that would impact at this point, if we will.
I just wanted to ask a question, 'cause I think, Randy, you said it is defined disability as determined by the veterans?
United States Veterans Administration.
Right, okay.
And, and the income guidelines by statute, by, by local state statutes, so there's a little, it's kind of confusing.
Yeah, right.
Confusing provision.
This is just a little review of, of actually what, what the state is allowing the towns to add to the, um...
Oh, we have it as a second page. But we have that, Kathy.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, you have that? Yeah, you gave it to us.
Oh, okay, good. You don't need me?
Yes, you do, just do the review. So, you have the number in town? You said ninety-dollar amount for impact?
Right, um, there are four thousand, the impact would be from...
Look for the camera, though.
Yes, right, right.
So, this only affects four people?
Yes.
No.
Oh, four qualified, yeah.
Only four, yeah?
There's only four, um, that qualify, that are a hundred percent disabled, that qualify under the income limitations, uh, because that is one of the qualifications.
Don't one of our, don't one of our, uh, veterans miss out because of the tax fees? Did we have, don't we have a income-qualified veteran?
There is, um, there is a person that misses out on the tax fees, because with these, these qualifications, they, um, they don't have to, they only take the, um, disability payments, the veterans' disability payments, um, and the, does, doesn't include social security, and the veterans' disability, I don't think so.
So, right now, we have four in New Malfred. But we have twenty-two total in town that are determined to be one-hundred percent disabled?
Yes. And they're getting the full exemption for the hundred percent disabled, but they're, they don't qualify as additional.
So, the additional amount, the increase would equate to twenty-four thousand dollars?
Yes.
And it's reimbursable from the state.
My motion?
Yeah.
I authorize the mayor to convene a public hearing for the revised provisions of Article Eight, exemption for veterans of code, new Malfred Code of Ordinance, to add an additional exemption for a hundred percent disabled veteran.
Second.
Any further discussion or question?
Did we set a date for that? Is the second of this, March ninth?
March ninth at seven fifteen.
Seven fifteen.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? I already told you about C. Action on tax recon?
Shall move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Candlewood Lake Authority, last year, what we budgeted, the council further adjusted, the average of the three top towns, and what they decided left us eleven thousand six hundred and forty-six dollars below what their budgeted amount was, so I would need supplemental appropriation to, uh, pay the balance.
Shall move?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain?
Motion to adjourn, Madam Mayor?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you very much, I know we had a lot...